Hafaday, good afternoon. We are going to be hearing two bills on the agenda. I'm sitting here on behalf of Speaker Theresa Turlohi, who had another conflicting obligation this afternoon. So I will be conducting the hearing on her behalf as her vice chair. Hafaday, the Committee on Health, Land, Justice and Culture is now called to order. Today is Thursday, September 19th, 2024, and the time is 2:03 PM in the afternoon. With regards to public notice and in compliance with the open government law, notices of these public hearings were published in the Guam Daily Post and posted in the government of Guam Public Notice Portal on Thursday, September 12th, 2024, to meet the five-day notice, and Tuesday, September 17th, 2024, to provide the 48-hour notice. Notices were also sent by email to all senators and all main media broadcasting outlets on September 12th, 2024, and on September 17th, 2024. This hearing is being livestreamed on the Guam Legislative's YouTube channel. With regards to general rules of conduct, individuals testifying shall be first recognized by the chair before speaking and begin by stating their name for record-keeping purposes. In an effort to minimize distractions while someone is testifying, the committee asked that those present to please be quiet and refrain from moving around within the public hearing room. Additionally, we have asked protocol to keep the doors quiet. Individuals who are presenting oral testimony are invited to submit written testimony afterwards in order to ensure that their input is accurately transcribed. After testifying, panelists will only be allowed to speak again in direct response to questioning or invitation of a senator who has the floor or at the discretion of the committee chair. After all have testified, senators will be recognized for five minutes of questioning of the panel or comments on the bill and shall not interrupt any other senator or any person testifying. The hearing is to collect testimony, not debate, or to engage in back-and-forth arguments with the participants. Buryating of any of the witnesses will not be allowed. If you ask a question, allow them to answer. The items on today's agenda, we have two bills. The first one is Bill Number 333-37 LS. This is sponsored by Senator William Parkinson, who's here today. An act to amend Section 1630A 3 and add a new Section 1630A 4 to amend Section 1640A 3 and to add a new Section 1640A 4 to amend Section 16.50A 2 and 3 and add a new 16.50A 4 and B, all of Chapter 16, Title IX, Guam Code annotated, relative to criminal homicide. The second bill that we have on our agenda today is Bill 306-37 COR, introduced by Senator Thomas Fisher. An act to amend Section 70.10A of Chapter 70, Title VIII, Guam Code annotated, to add 70.10A VIII relative to Guam courts requiring prosecutors to notify defendants of any per uncharged criminal vicious or immoral conduct, of which the prosecutor has knowledge of and intends to use at trial. So with that, I'd certainly like to acknowledge my colleagues that are here today, who are sponsors of each of these bills, Senator Parkinson and Senator Fisher. Thank you for joining us. And we will begin the process with Bill 333-37 relative to criminal homicide. But before I hear from those that testified on the bill, I would like to invite the prime sponsors, Senator Parkinson. If you could please introduce the bill for us this afternoon.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Buenos, Hafaday, honorable members of the legislature and the people of Guam. Bill 333-37 addresses a grave threat to our island community: the rise of methamphetamine and fentanyl-related overdose deaths. This bill seeks to amend Guam's criminal code to include Schedule II drugs, such as methamphetamine and fentanyl, in the definition of aggravated murder, murder, and manslaughter. Our aim is not to cast a wide net indiscriminately, but to put a laser focus on those who knowingly and callously distribute these dangerous substances leading to death and destruction in our island families. To give you some context, the Guam Criminal Law and Procedure Review Commission was established by Illicituran Guahan in Public Law 36-119 on November 9th, 2022. Authored by my esteemed colleague, Senator Frank Losch Jr., it marked the first comprehensive review of our criminal code since the inception of the code by the 13th Guam Legislature in 1976. The task was no small one. It aimed to modernize, clarify, and address gaps in our laws that have persisted for nearly half a century. Under the leadership of Magistrate Judge Jonathan R. Kwan, who was appointed by then-Chief Justice Philip Carbolito and the tireless work of the Commission's Executive Director, Attorney Andrew S. Kanga, the Commission took on this monumental task. It was divided into four subcommittees, each focusing on different areas of the law. The Crimes Against Persons Subcommittee, which included respected members such as Chair Attorney Joseph B. McDonald, Attorney Christine Santos Sonorio, Public Defender Executive Director Stephen Natori, and GPD Chief Stephen Ignacio, drafted the changes we see now in Bill 333-37. The purpose of the Commission was clear: to address outdated, archaic, or insufficient statutes that fail to address the current realities of crime and its consequences on Guam. The inclusion of Schedule II drugs in the definitions of aggravated murder, murder, and manslaughter is a direct response to the growing crisis we face with methamphetamine and fentanyl overdoses. In recent years, Guam has seen a troubling increase in drug overdoses, particularly those involving methamphetamine and fentanyl. According to the Guam Police Department and Department of Public Health and Social Services, there have been over 50 reported methamphetamine overdoses and nearly a dozen fentanyl-related deaths in the past three years alone. These numbers represent the lives of our neighbors, friends, family members, who have fallen victim to this epidemic. Even more disturbing is the fact that fentanyl, a potent synthetic opioid, is now being laced into methamphetamine supplies on the island. This practice is exceedingly dangerous, as users often have no idea they are ingesting a substance many times more potent than heroin. Fentanyl can cause respiratory failure and death within minutes. This silent killer is already making its way into our streets, and the impact is devastating. Our current laws already classify Schedule I drug-related offenses in the definition of aggravated murder, murder, and manslaughter. Schedule I drugs are substances classified as having a high potential for abuse, no currently accepted medical use in the United States, and a lack of accepted safety for use under medical supervision. Examples include heroin, LSD, ecstasy, peyote, cannabis, despite ongoing debates about its medical use. It is logical and necessary to extend this to Schedule II drugs like methamphetamine and fentanyl. Schedule II drugs are substances that have a high potential for abuse, with the use potentially leading to severe psychological or physical dependence. However, they also have accepted medical uses with strict regulations. Examples of Schedule II drugs include methamphetamine, fentanyl, oxycodone, hydrocodone, vicodin, codeine, and morphine. These substances are not just dangerous, they are lethal. Those who distributed these substances, resulting in the death of another, should be held accountable to the fullest extent of the law. Bill 333-37 LS targets the dealers and suppliers who profit from poisoning our community. It sends a clear and unequivocal message: if you choose to distribute these deadly substances into our community and your actions result in a death, you will face the gravest consequences under the legal system. By classifying deaths resulting from methamphetamine and fentanyl distribution as aggravated murder, murder, or manslaughter, we aim to create a strong deterrent. We want to prevent fentanyl from gaining a foothold on our island. This legislation puts dealers on notice. Guam will not stand idly by while you wreck havoc on our people. I want to be clear that this bill is one part of a multifaceted approach to combating the drug crisis on Guam. It is part of a comprehensive change to the criminal justice statute. However, I felt that the growing number of debts to meth and fentanyl necessitated including this particular change as a standalone bill in order to enact it as soon as possible. We must have the legal tools to hold those who profit from death and poisoning our community accountable. In closing, I urge this body to consider the gravity of the situation and the necessity of Bill 333-37. This legislation is just about justice and protecting our island. We owe it to those we have lost and to those we hope to save. By enacting this bill, we send a resounding message that the distribution of methamphetamine and fentanyl with the potential to kill will be met with the harshest penalties our laws can provide. Time to act is now. Our families and our future generations depend on the steps we take today to safeguard our island from the scourge of these deadly substances. Teduce, Masi, and thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Parkinson. I'd also like to recognize Senator Barnett, who's joined us this afternoon. Thank you for joining us. For the record, the committee requested feedback on Bill Number 333-37 LS from the following, some of which are still pending, from the Office of the Attorney General of Guam, the Judiciary of Guam, the Public Defender Service Corporation, the Guam Bar Association, and the Guam Police Department. As summary of the bill, the intent of the legislation is to strengthen the legal framework surrounding criminal homicide. Specifically, the bill aims to classify the death of a minor under the age of 18, resulting from the illegal use of a Schedule I or II controlled substance, knowingly or willingly provided by an unauthorized person as aggravated murder. The legal review of the bill was requested from the Legal Bureau on September 17th, 2024, and the response from the Legal Bureau is still pending. With regards to fiscal note, a fiscal impact request was sent on August 8th, 2024, to BBMR and responded on August 19th, 2024, stating that based on the comments received from the Judiciary of Guam, absent further information, the impact of a subject bill cannot be determined at this time. Such the proposed amendments are administrative in nature and pose no immediate fiscal impact upon the funds of the government of Guam. The committee will now receive testimony and will go over the list of those that have signed up for the Bill 333. We have Mr. John Morrison. We also have our Attorney General Douglas Moylan and Alana Uggan, also from the Attorney General's office. Is there anyone else who would like to testify? If not, we'll begin with you, Mr. Morrison. You signed up first.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the committee. My name was mentioned earlier as a member of the 8 and 9 GCA Revision Subcommittee and particularly the Violent Crimes Chapter of that, so I'm familiar with this proposal. I can say in general, although my name may be written down as opposition to it, I'm not opposed to the intent of the bill in any way. In reviewing the current language with my colleagues, basically, we had two prosecutors and a high-level police officer on the committee with us, and the information that they had was that it's just not really usable in its current form because people don't really overdose on Schedule I drugs or they're not readily available. It's just not the type of substance that we see on Guam. Schedule I drugs are the types of drugs that have no medical or scientific value, so generally, federal legislation has found. Schedule II are the drugs that we're more accustomed to seeing on Guam, the fentanyl not so much, but the methamphetamine, cocaine, other things like that, in addition to a whole host of other drugs that are prescribed or have some medical or scientific value. So those are the drugs that we're seeing more common that I think are more likely for people to actually overdose on. Schedule I's have a lot of other things included in it, but I don't remember ever seeing anyone on Guam who overdosed on mescaline or that there was even a traffic stop involving mescaline or peyote or some of these other Schedule I's. So I think changing the law to recognize the reality that there's Schedule II's and those are the drugs that present a more significant and immediate problem is right-headed. The issue I have with the proposed amendment, though, is as it's laid out, if you strip all the language out of 1633 but leave the introductory sentence in there, I think it does become very broad, that other language is taken and put into a new paragraph, but 1633 still stands alone and reads, "Death is directly caused by the illegal use of a Schedule I or Schedule II controlled substance as defined to a minor child under the age of 18." It's just difficult to tell in that paragraph, is there a medical exemption for prescriptions as the current law says? Who are the actors that we're looking out for in this paragraph exactly? And what do we mean by illegal use, per se? Some of that other language does track now in 1630A 4, but if you leave, I think, the remainder of the previous paragraph, and that applies to all sections, just sort of hanging there, I think it does create a law that would be overbroad and maybe have some unintended consequences. So those are my real thoughts on it. I've been critical of proposed bills that dealt with drug policy in the past, and I remain critical of them. I think that better policy is to make sure that we have treatment beds available and space available for everybody that wants or needs that. Tell the legislature for the last three months or so, there's been a moratorium on getting people into our Adult Drug Court program based on staffing at the judiciary, the ability to do clinical evaluations, and having enough support to make sure people get into those programs. So if somebody is desperate to get into treatment right now into one of those programs that are very successful, there's just a limited ability to do it currently, and I don't think they were ever supported enough, as they should have been. So obviously, I understand where the sponsor is coming from here, but particularly as it relates to aggravated homicides, those are currently the types of things like lying in wait for someone, being a contract murderer, committing a murder in the context of a criminal sexual conduct. These are the worst types of conduct that we can imagine. Knowing the facts around many of these types of cases, we're not usually dealing with these sort of movie villain drug dealers. It's generally someone who's barely scraping by on their own, and as the law is written, it may be so overbroad that if people were just using drugs together and the decedent had a heart attack based on the drugs, but based on also maybe 20 or 30 years of drug abuse and just that taking a toll on their body, they may be now faced with life in prison. I don't think that rises to the same level as a contract killer. So I would maybe look at changing this type of homicide to something more like a criminally negligent homicide that definitely would have an impact but might not confuse the sort of evil that the legislature is really dealing with. So those are my comments. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Morrison. We'll have the Attorney General testify, and certainly our colleagues will be able to provide comments and ask any questions. So I appreciate you providing your testimony with that. Attorney General Douglas Moylan, you're welcome to proceed with your testimony on Bill 333.
Thank you, Senator Brown and Hafaday, Senator Barnett, Senator Parkinson, and Senator Fisher. Our office maintained a presence through the prosecutor Christine Tenorio, who I understand participated in this, so we are in support of it. This testimony is submitted on behalf of myself and our client, the people of Guam, in support of Bill 337-37. As a legislative findings concerning this bill report, the issue of drug use and drug-related deaths is a continuing problem on our island. Fentanyl was late in coming to Guam, but it's here and is just as lethal as anywhere else. We support strengthening our homicide laws to allow prosecutors to charge those who sell or deliver these lethal substances with murder. Drug dealers are in the business to make money. Meth and fentanyl are part of the illegal drug landscape on Guam for one purpose: to addict more people so dealers can make more money. The bill significantly increases the consequences that dealers will pay when they are caught selling drugs to our neighbors, especially to our children. Senators, this bill doesn't go far enough. You need to start... It's a bill that's designed towards the deterrent element of it. Obviously, you're trying to say as lawmakers that if you commit the crime of distribution, that the consequences are going to be higher for certain types of conduct. The problem is really... One aspect of it is supply and demand. You've got an economic curve going here. The price, the supply, and the demand for it have created a scourge on Guam, literally a plague. We're dealing with meth addicts that are being created almost every day, and threatening them with these type of laws isn't fixing the system. The dealers, it's so lucrative that the drugs have increased in the amount on Guam, the price has gone down, and the demand is going through the roof. I respectfully disagree with my colleague that the Adult Drug Court has been very successful. Where are the statistics? Does anybody have any statistics on the recidivism rate of people that get into the ADC program one or two and whether or not they commit crimes again? I can tell you on the daily operations of our office when we're doing the magistrates, you've got the repeat criminals that are coming back with meth all over their rap sheets. Whether or not it's conviction or not, the arrests are all over these rap sheets that I'm seeing. They're going from the non-violent crimes, which is usually the theft, and have now graduated. And from all indications, the majority, if not all, of the deaths this year have meth on the police reports. This is not going to stop it, with all due respect to Senator Parkinson. You know, you need to find a way to cut the supply or to cut the demand. In my opinion, you need to seriously look at the statutes that deal with possession, which we see every day in all those police reports. The police are pulling them over, those cars with meth addicts that can't drive straight and are being pulled over for traffic violations and then being found to have meth on them, in their car, in their pockets, the meth pipes, the residue. We need to have mandatory drug imprisonment. You guys are... We've done it as a community for DUIs. Mandatory two days in jail. Where is the mandatoriness of these possessions? This is a more serious crime than drinking. That is the type of useful legislation that, from my perspective as the elected attorney general, and that's actually seeing it with my prosecutors, will make a difference on Guam. You take away these drug addicts, you scare them to the point that they're either not going to take the drug or you put them in jail so that they can get the help they need. And I was part of the opioid council along with the speaker, the lieutenant governor, the cabinet. We gave the opioid money to the Dignity Project. That's only dealing with the injury, the damages that is occurring from the meth epidemic on Guam. We're mitigating the effects of it but not addressing the core problem of meth addiction. And a year ago, we gave the money to Guam Behavioral Health to put the non-Arsat treatment at DOC, when the community is protected because that meth addict is in prison and in some form of incarceration because when people get addicted to meth, they are no longer capable of controlling themselves. And I beg to differ with anyone that has an opinion otherwise, that once under the addiction, meth addicts cannot be trusted. We see our families throwing them out of the homes. We're seeing them in the homeless communities. They're devastating people that we grew up with. And this is not a judgmental statement, but an actual epistemological perspective. We're seeing it in the AG's office. The Adult Drug Court, why is it that they are not accepting... And I was just given the report within the past month. Why isn't it that the Adult Drug Court isn't accepting any more people at this time? They're swamped. The boat is swamped. You can fix a meth addict one day. It's like alcohol. You fix them one day, they go through depression later in their life, they get back into alcohol, they got to get back into treatment, and so forth. That's just human nature. You put a meth addict into a situation where they've become a meth addict, you put him through an Adult Drug Court program, even if they're successful, we're seeing them come back into the system. So the legislations that are coming before the you respected senators, I would respectfully submit, needs to be more tailored toward cutting the supply and cutting the demand. Again, if you have a strong demand, you're going to get the drugs into Guam somehow. It's just economics. It becomes profitable because there's a big demand, so you get the suppliers bringing it in. And the laws are already tough against these dealers. You've got the federal government out there. They're just as active as a local government on prosecuting and convicting the drug dealers. Nobody likes a drug dealer. We all agree. You got to stop the drug dealers. But the picture... This legislation is just the tip of the iceberg and, in my opinion, will not deal with the core problem that we're facing every day. Something more needs to be done. Thank you, senators.
Thank you very much, Attorney General Moylan. And with that, we'll start with the main sponsor of the bill, Senator Parkinson. If you have any questions or comments you'd like to make to those of our individuals that have testified this afternoon on your bill?
No, I don't have any questions, ma'am. I'm just here to listen to their perspectives. Thank you.
Thank you as well. Senator Fisher, do you have any questions or comments you would like to make for those that have testified this afternoon?
No, thank you, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Senator Chris Barnett, do you have any questions or comments?
Not necessarily, ma'am. Just more of a comment about drug dealers. It's been my experience on Guam that the major drug dealers, the major kingpins, are not scraping by. They're starting businesses, they're driving in the biggest trucks, they're rubbing elbows with the highest levels of our government. So I just wanted to state that, ma'am. Teduce, Masi.
Thank you very much for your comments, Senator Barnett. Do you have anything else, Attorney General, you'd like to add? Or Mr. Morrison, do you have anything else you would like to add?
I would just clarify my comment that I'm discussing clients that I interact with. Obviously, if somebody's living on Nimitz Hill in a mansion, they're not going to be my client. So I haven't really dealt with anybody that Senator Barnett is talking about. But I would certainly, you know, be in support of those individuals being arrested because I think they present much more of a threat than my clients do. Thank you.
Well, we do know they exist. I mean, they're buying real estate.
And Senator Barnett, what I would respectfully recommend is that it is out there and those people are... It's the whole racketeering, the RICO statutes put together by the federal government and so forth. I strongly recommend that the senators consider bringing in the Department of Revenue and Taxation and using their audit authority to track the laundered money that these organizations... Normally, they get the money in, they need to launder it, they use the businesses, which is the whole RICO statute structured, and have some local enforcement by the Department of Revenue and Taxation auditors. Because once they can't prove where the source of their money is, that's where the criminal investigators start to seriously scrutinize that.
Thank you, AG, for that. And I, again, just want to commend you for... We've got to take a stance. You know, years ago, we had a scandal at the Department of Corrections where a lot of corrections officers were implicated with, you know, smuggling and being involved with bringing methamphetamine into the prison. and being involved with bringing methamphetamine into the prison. And instead of seeing these actions condemned, in a lot of ways, they were almost condoned by high-ranking members of this administration. So I think when we forgive that type of behavior and we don't punish it the way that we should or even, you know, provide the necessary hard approach and stance against this type of activity. I think it just sends a message to people in the community that, hey, if you're going to smuggle drugs into the prison and you happen to be connected, you know, powerfully, people who are politically powerful and elected, that, you know, not only are you going to get away with it, but you're going to move on to a more lucrative employment in the government of Guam. So I commend you for that. And I think more people need to take a strong stand against individuals who are poisoning our community. Cito Smosi, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Barnett. And certainly, Mr. Morrison, you're also welcome if you want to provide any written testimony. Again, it's optional for you, but if you would like to provide any written testimony on this bill for the record, you're also welcome to do so.
Thank you for that, Senator.
Okay, and with that, as the main sponsor of this bill, Senator Parkinson, do you have any closing statements you would like to make?
Yeah, just a brief one. Like, the scourge of meth and fentanyl, it's one of those things where it doesn't seem like it could ever happen to you or anyone close to you until it does. The circumstances are always different, but the tragedy is the same. Preventable death that didn't need to happen. And I agree with the Attorney General that perhaps this bill itself is not enough and it's not going to solve the problem on its own. But like many walls that we use to protect the things we love, we build them one brick at a time. And I hope this wouldn't be one additional brick to solving the scourge of meth and fentanyl overdoses. The work will continue beyond this legislation. But for now, I ask my colleagues to please support me in adding this additional brick into the walls of our legal protections for our people. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Parkinson. If there's no further testimony on Bill 33-37, we will move on to the next bill in the agenda. With that, the second item on the agenda, I'm just going to summarize the title here is relative to the Guam courts requiring prosecutors to notify defendants of any prior uncharged criminal vicious or immoral conduct of which the prosecutor has knowledge of and intends to use at trial. And before we certainly have those that have signed up to testify, I would like to invite the prime sponsor, Senator Tom Fisher, to please introduce his bill.
Thank you very much, ma'am. This bill modifies the required disclosures by the government in discovery in criminal trial matters. It specifically addresses Section 70.10 of our Criminal Procedure Code. What it does fundamentally is it requires the prosecutor to disclose evidence that the prosecutor may use or intends to use at trial that we sometimes refer to as prior bad acts. But please be aware, this is not 404B. This is directed towards the defendant. This is not directed towards just any particular witness. So what happens is prosecutor brings a case. The individual is accused and, of course, presumed to be absolutely innocent of any allegation. And the person is brought into court, as naturally happens. And the individual may choose to go to trial. Now, if he's going to go to trial, he also has or she has a subsequent decision to make. Will they testify? Now, we presume them to be innocent. And the person nevertheless may be afraid to testify because they may have some sort of an offense in their record that falls within the prohibitions of 609. And I'm referring to rules of evidence. They may decide or they may elect not to testify because they are afraid something in their past will be brought up that they are unaware of at the time of offering their testimony, unaware that the prosecutor will use it. There is a tremendous ambiguity. And all of us who have defended and prosecuted criminal trials know that dilemma that the prisoner or the defendant will go through in trying to determine whether or not to testify. They have an absolute right to testify. So what this merely does is require, upon request, that the prosecutor disclose to the defendant what evidence, specific evidence, he or she intends to use against the defendant. And the disclosure is subject to challenge in the court. The person can go up to the, just like this happening, I'm sure, five times today, a kind of a motion and limine thing, saying, "Judge, don't let the prosecutor use this." It's the sort of decision that the judge makes. Well, it's the job of the judge. They have to, you know, call evidence either admissible or inadmissible. It's certainly not unique. But what it will do is it will allow an informed choice by the accused, who is presumed to be innocent, to decide whether or not they will testify or they will not testify. Once they are informed of what it is they are looking at, they can make a better, more intelligent choice because they know the evidence that the prosecutor has. Now, if the prosecutor has something tremendously damning, then that individual may decide that they don't want to testify. Or the individual, in spite of the fact the prosecutor has something enormously damning, they may want to testify because they stand upon their right to be presumed innocent. So it is fundamentally, it is a bill to bring more perfect justice to the people of Guam. All of us, all of us, any of us in this room could be accused by the appropriate body of committing a crime and we will be presumed innocent. And this bill just, you know, I almost said it provides a particular protection. I don't know that that's the correct word. I don't know that it provides a protection other than it allows somebody to be fully informed of what they're looking at. And certainly, that is, I think that's a goal we can all get behind. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much, Senator Fisher. For the record, the committee requested feedback on Bill Number 3306-37 from the following, some of which is still pending: the Office of the Attorney General that's present today, the Judiciary of Guam, the Public Defender Service Corporation, the Guam Bar Association. Summary of the bill, the proposed legislation would require that upon a request by a defendant, the prosecutor shall notify the defendant of all specific instances of the defendant's prior uncharged criminal vicious or immoral conduct of which the prosecutor has knowledge and which the prosecutor intends to use at trial for purposes of impeaching the credibility of the defendant. With regards to legal review of the bill, it was requested from the Legal Bureau on September 17, 2024, and a response from the Legal Bureau is still pending. With regards to fiscal impact note of this bill, a fiscal note impact request was sent on May 21, 2024, and to BBMR responded on May 29, 2024, stating that, based on the comments received from the Office of the Attorney General of Guam, the proposed legislation adds an additional duty relating to prosecutorial obligations. The OAG has estimated that they will need two additional investigator threes to complete the proposed duty at an average cost of $120,336, inclusive of salary and benefits, for each investigator. If inactive, the OAG is expecting the total estimated cost impact of Bill Number 306-37COR to be $240,672. And with that, the committee will now receive testimony from the bill. And beginning with Mr. Morrison, you're the first to sign up.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the committee. I think you all may have an impression that I'm a trial attorney and that's been the case for some time. So I can relate to what the sponsor is trying to do here. To just put this in perspective, imagine I've been appointed to do a case where my client's charged with aggravated assault and he is adamant that he was set upon by another individual who was the initial aggressor and was merely defending himself. So I give my opening statement where I say that, that he was the initial, that the other person was the initial aggressor, that he was just defending himself. Maybe the other person has some prior bad acts of themselves, a violent history. We get to a point in the trial where my client testifies and he says that, that he was defending himself. And after he testifies, the prosecutor says, "Judge, we have a problem. I have information that when this adult was 13 years old, he broke another kid's jaw during a fight." So all of his statements about being a peaceful person or being the victim here is called into doubt. And I want to present that evidence. So I think what the sponsor is trying to do here is say, before we have that disaster where we're sitting around going, should there be a mistrial? Should the prosecutor be able to use this evidence? Should there be a continuance? Should there be some big disruption of the trial? It's just to say, let's get all the cards on the table and know exactly what the evidence is. And I think that's, I think that's smart. I think that will save judicial resources. I think it'll save time. It may actually prevent people from going to trial or thinking twice about going to trial if they know that there's other evidence that may be harmful to their case and may consider negotiating instead. So I think this, in general, will save resources and the time potentially of trials. I would say, if I were to change a few things about it, there are a couple of things that I would look at. Currently, it says that notification by the prosecutor shall be made immediately prior to the commencement of jury selection. I might consider giving the prosecutor the obligation of doing it somewhat earlier so we know what the evidence is prior to a jury sitting there waiting in the wings and everyone ready for trial. So I would give them the obligation of producing it a week or two before the trial is scheduled. I also feel like the prosecutor should have an ongoing duty to disclose this without the defense having to motion it if they have this evidence and they are aware of it or it's under the control of agencies that they're in charge of. They should just disclose it immediately. So those are my real comments on it. We do go through a similar process currently with in-limine motions to introduce or exclude certain types of evidence. But I think this just clearly sets out what's required. The only other real thought I have on it is, as it's currently written, and our entire discovery statute is subject to this, it doesn't say what the remedy is going to be if there's a breach. So if there's an intentional violation of this section, it's difficult to say what exactly the judge is going to do and it may be wise to give them some guidance because this evidence is particularly inflammatory. As the sponsor points out, it relates to the defendant who may have just testified at his own trial and now the judge is trying to determine, what do we do with this evidence? I would be comfortable saying that if the prosecutor willfully failed in their obligation, that the evidence should be excluded. But there are more extreme and potentially appropriate remedies as well. I think historically, if we looked back for discovery breaches like this, it may have been in the early days of our jurisprudence been that the case will be dismissed if there's a breach. I think over time, that proved unworkable because serious cases were getting dismissed. So the standard then became, well, the prosecutor can't use it. But again, there may be exceptional cases where that's just unfair, given the facts. Now, we're kind of at a point where the remedy that most judicial officers are comfortable with is giving you a continuance, which if the defendant's already testified and this evidence is potentially coming in, is useless. Are you going to just, I mean, sit there and look at the evidence for another five days? I mean, you need to know sort of what's going to happen with it. So that's my final thought on the bill as written. Now, taking the lead from the Attorney General, who talked broadly about some other things, I would just say, in general, if we're talking about the issue of discovery, I think the legislature should look closely at expanding the obligation to provide Giglio material. I also think that our use of, our lack of body camera usage is a problem on Guam. And I think a lot of confidence could be restored if there was an obligation for police officers to use body cameras. It would certainly solve a lot of problems or disagreements that happen at motion to suppress evidentiary hearings. And I would finally request that the legislature consider making it a foundation to admission of evidence that custodial interrogations be recorded in some fashion so that there's actual memorialized video or recorded evidence of what was actually said. Thank you, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Morrison. With that, we do have several people that signed up for 306, including Jacob Wagner and Alana Uggan from the Attorney General's office. But I assume Attorney General Doug Moynihan, you'll be providing formal testimony in behalf of your office.
Yes, I will. Thank you, Senator.
Please proceed. Thank you.
Hafed, Senator Brown, Senator Barnett, and Senator Fisher. This testimony is submitted on behalf of myself and our client, the people of Guam, in opposition to Bill Number 306-37. Simply put, we believe this bill is a solution in search of a problem and creates irresolvable, an irresolvable dilemma for the judiciary. We support efforts to make our judicial system fairer and more equitable. This bill, in its present form, asks prosecutors to disclose undefined information and asks judges to resolve questions that haven't been asked. The job of a prosecutor is to enforce Guam's criminal laws and to do justice. The function of our judges are to impartially interpret and to apply the law. This bill, in its present form, requires the people in the government to potentially needlessly put into the public record facts about a defendant that damages their reputation beyond the fact that they've been arrested and will greatly impede their efforts to achieve a speedy trial. Let's parse the new language in the bill, and I'll make the point. The bill asks for a disclosure of certain information that may be used to impeach the credibility of a defendant. Impeach the credibility to a non-lawyer means to call the defendant a liar or to question their credibility. Whenever someone testifies in a trial, it's the job of opposing counsel to bring out not only the facts a witness may have left out, but also the witnesses' biases and motivations in testifying. We want juries to hear testimony, but we also want juries to have as much information as possible with which to weigh the value of someone's testimony. So to some extent, the job of opposing counsel is to call a witness for the other side a liar and to prove it. Criminal defendants have the constitutional right to not testify in their trials, and they almost never do. The reason is that if the defendant testifies, then the prosecutor gets to impeach them by asking them questions the defendant may not want to answer, such as why that person may have lived a life of crime in their prior criminal acts and that sort of information. The bill asks the prosecutor to enter into the public record all uncharged past criminal acts and vicious or immoral conduct, which the prosecutor might use to impeach the defendant's testimony. Even though it's rare that a defendant might testify, this bill will require that in all criminal trials the prosecutor must put into the public record the bad acts the prosecutor can dig up about the defendant. Consequently, even where a person is found not guilty and never testifies, the Attorney General's office will still put into the public record all information a defendant may not wish to have disclosed. I choose the examples to illustrate another problem with the bill. Exactly what is the definition of vicious or immoral conduct? Many will say that an act is vicious, while some may say it is not. Some believe skipping mass is immoral. Is that what needs to be disclosed? The finer point here is that attorneys and judges need to be clear and to be made clear unequivocal rules for trial. Because if the rules aren't clear, then the arguing will never stop between councils. The bill also asks a judge to rule on the admissibility of this impossible impeachment evidence before the trial even starts. The two principal rules of evidence are that things need to be relevant and that the person testifying should have firsthand knowledge of the things they are testifying about. Even assuming that the defendant in a trial might be listed as potential witnesses, if defense counsel does put them on the stand, they will only ask their client to testify to facts and circumstances that are advantageous to the points of counsel is trying to make. But defense counsel doesn't know what points they want to make until they hear the prosecution's case. And the prosecution won't know what a testifying defendant might be lying about until they testify or how the prosecutor might otherwise impeach the defendant's testimony until the defendant testifies. However, this bill requires the prosecution to disclose every bad act known about the defendant because the disclosure has to come before anyone hears any testimony. This bill also asks the impossibility out of a judge, requiring the judge to decide admissibility of impeachment evidence before the judge or anyone else hears the testimony from the person, the defendant. That's not fair to the prosecution or to the judge, but it's really not fair to the defendant, who likely won't even testify. defendant, who likely won't even testify or won't ever have the truthfulness of any testimony challenged. Why put things in the public record that only create more problems than it solves? We suggest that the first thing every legislature should ask about every bill is, what problem are we solving here? I don't know what problem this bill solves. It also asks for disclosure of ambiguous information that will only serve to create endless pretrial hearings and delay the opportunity for victims to receive justice. The bill focuses on a situation, criminal defendants testifying in their own trials that may never happen. Senators, I'm going to address this issue very lightly. You have an active defense attorney introducing a bill that is undermining and causing greater burdens upon the people of Guam's attorneys. I object as the Attorney General that a defense attorney is using his office in order to write bills and present it to the legislature that undermine the people of Guam's legal interests. The author of this bill has divided loyalties. He has a loyalty to criminal defendant and a loyalty to the people of Guam. I believe that, in addition to that, where is the draft model legislation that this is following? The Superior Court of Guam and the judiciary have an elaborate set of existing rules that do not require this, and they've been in our books for probably at least 50 years since the code may have been adopted from California. Another problem with this bill potentially, and I believe there are exceptions, but with the passage of the Organic Act, the Supreme Court of Guam normally makes its own rules when it comes to evidence. The Guam Rules of Evidence, this appears to be something that should be more appropriately adopted within the Guam Rules of Evidence and not being put into a statute form. That issue, I think, needs to be further researched because this clearly appears to address the admissibility of evidence, requirements of disclosure to a certain extent. And I would object because, as the office had earlier pointed out, it's costing the taxpayers at least $240,000 more in an office where there's not enough lawyers on Guam. Our budget was not increased. We have this essentially an unfunded mandate unless there's going to be a supplemental appropriation to the AG's office, requiring greater burdens on potentially delaying, and it will delay, the current movement of cases through the criminal cases through the judiciary. You're creating more of a basis in which defense councils will object, will be appealing these evidentiary type of rulings, and further frustrate an already overcrowded criminal justice system and the dockets for the judges, of which there are only four full-time criminal court justices of the seven that are handling an already COVID-afflicted, burdened criminal With that, senators, our office opposes the legislation and believes that it is inappropriate for a defense attorney to be drafting legislation against the Office of the Attorney General. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Attorney General Moylan, for providing your testimony and also providing your written testimony with regards to Bill 306. With that, we'll certainly have Senator Fisher as the main sponsor. Do you have any questions or comments you would like to make?
Yes, I do, ma'am. Thank you very much. The first thing I need to point out, I think that the Attorney General is under a bit of a misunderstanding. This is not a rule of evidence. This is a rule of criminal procedure. They're quite different. This is requiring disclosure of information that is almost certainly in the AG's hands. I just have to comment on this quarter-million-dollar bill they've attached to it. I assume that the Attorney General was able to, just didn't just pull this number out of their hat, that he must have crunched some numbers to determine that, and we would be happy to look over that analysis from the Office of the Attorney General. I think that that is fanciful, to say that this is going to cost any more at all, because it is the job of the investigators, and it is the job of the police force, and it's the job of the Attorney General's assistants to gather the evidence that they intend to use. They don't have to gather evidence they don't intend to use. All of this that they are required to disclose is in their hands. I think raising this canard of $240,000 bill is offered just as an additional burden that simply does not exist. But, Mr. Morrison, you know, you heard me, there are people, I suppose, at home who may be watching this who are not practitioners, and I have just recently said that this is a rule of procedure and not a rule of evidence. When I say "rule of evidence," what do I mean by that?
Well, you mean, I think you mean a codified rule that has been adopted by our Supreme Court that lays out what evidence is admissible and under what various theories it is. There's a whole...
Okay. So, for example, do the rules of evidence say anything about hearsay?
Of course, yes.
And is there a rule of evidence which, absent certain circumstances, exclude hearsay?
Definitely.
Okay. Is there a certain rule of evidence that prohibits, you know, efforts? Well, I guess that's a civil rule. Is there a rule of evidence that requires that evidence be relevant?
Yes, that's a foundational requirement.
Okay. Is there a rule of evidence that says generally irrelevant evidence is not admissible?
Yes.
Okay. So there are, I would, my recollection is there's somewhere around maybe 60 to 70 rules of evidence. And I've also used the phrase "rule of criminal procedure." Do practitioners in the criminal law, do they use the rules of criminal procedure?
Yes, that's the roadmap for a case. Those are the rules passed by the legislature and signed into law by the governor that lay out the structure that a criminal case should take, yes.
Okay, so you used the phrase "roadmap." Does criminal procedure tell us when a witness has to be arraigned? In other words, enter a plea of guilty or not guilty?
Yes.
Does the, do the rules of procedure tell us how many juror members are required in any given trial?
Yes.
Do the rules of criminal procedure instruct us on when we have to bring somebody before a magistrate judge?
Yes, those are, I would say the first third of the rules deal with some of those situations.
Well, I'm going to generalize here. Is it fair to say that the rules of procedure, as you used, of criminal procedure are a roadmap? And once we understand the roadmap and we understand the journey that's ahead of us, that the rules of evidence tell us what we can do in that trial?
I mean, yeah, there's nothing objectional about that statement. That's all true.
Okay. I just wanted to bring that up because you and I and others are fluent in this sort of stuff, but the average person would not be, wouldn't be expected to be. So I just wanted to make sure we didn't leave anything in ambiguity out there, sir. I wanted to ask you quickly, you said, I think your suggestion on body cams is terrific, and I think that the Guam Police Department supports that, and I think the legislature has actually moved forward to bring body cams for use in the Guam Police Department. I think your point is very well taken, and I think that everybody would agree, including the Guam Police Department, Chief of Police, everybody. The theory, of course, being that that helps to protect police officers as well as defendants. Your second suggestion was as a, now, you're going to have to explain what we meant by that. You said a foundational requirement for the introduction of a defendant's interrogation would require some sort of capture, either by video or audio. Is that correct?
That's correct. I believe it's a good idea. There are other jurisdictions that have done this, either through legislation or Supreme Court rule, opinion. And essentially, what happens currently is someone is arrested or taken in for an interview by GPD, and an interview is conducted, and then there is potentially a huge disagreement about what was actually said, or the circumstances in which it was said, if it was coerced or not, if it was freely made. So all those issues arise just because we are not recording those interviews, which is really quite simple to do with today's technology. This hearing is being recorded, for instance, and will be, is on YouTube Live right now and will be in the public domain for as long as we can all imagine. So I don't think that there's any reason at this point that we cannot have video or at least audio recordings of all those interactions, so there is no question about what was said and what promises were made or not made.
Okay. Thank you for that, sir. Before I move on to asking questions of the Attorney General, I just, an observation would be that the same theory that drives the police force to support body cams, it protects them, I think also it's the exact same theory supports the police officers and their work in interviewing and conducting interrogations. You know, they will avoid the, as you and I have heard many, many times, you know, allegations of police misconduct, and they beat it out of me, and, you know, I didn't see it and I can't speak. You know, you've heard the litany, and some of it's true, but by and large, it's not. And I think that your idea of making this a foundational requirement would really help Guam Police Department, and it would also have the knock-on effect of helping the community. And so I thank you for those suggestions, but I would like to ask the Attorney General of Guam some questions about his testimony. Sir, thank you for the written testimony. I've had an opportunity to review it. I just, I know what your answer will be on this, but I'm going to ask it anyway. It's kind of rhetorical, I guess, but do you agree that the burden of proof remains with the government as well as the burden of going forward in a criminal trial?
Senator, the burden of persuasion and the burden of proof are upon the people, the government, the government's attorneys. That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. This bill, sir, is defined to make the rules of disclosure more transparent and make for the defendant, make a choice clearer, testify or not testify. Do you agree with that?
No, I don't. I think that the existing rules require that the government, in meeting the burden of proof and the burden of persuasion, which is beyond a reasonable doubt, or the burden of proof, that if you intend to convict a citizen, that you must disclose that information in advance at trial. You're adding additional, you're trying to make the prosecution do work that the prosecution might not choose to do to convict your client.
Okay.
And again, I object to the fact that I'm being questioned by a defense attorney sitting as a senator of this legislature.
Understood. Your objection is on the record, and I'm sure it's been registered by the committee itself. But going back to the question, now, this bill will illustrate, illuminate for a defendant what it is the government intends to use in the, well, in the event that they choose to testify.
No, it won't, because we already have an obligation to provide all the evidence in advance of trial, of all the evidence we intend to use at trial. We're not here to be doing the work of Defense Attorney Fisher or Defense Attorney Morrison. The rules are already in the books, and the government will be sanctioned if we do not provide all the evidence we intend to use at trial, exculpatory evidence that can prove the innocence of the defendant. Why are we doing these additional steps that's going to cost the taxpayers, the people of Guam, more money and threaten the safety of the crime victims? You're making it harder for me and my prosecutors to prove our case, doing the administrative work that should be done by the defense attorney, by yourself, Mr. Fisher.
How would, okay, well, I don't want to quibble with you, but I'm just wondering how a defense attorney would do that work, since it's entirely the choice of the government on which evidence they choose to introduce.
We have everybody's social security numbers. We have all the histories in the government records. If you expect the prosecutors to be doing your homework, Defense Attorney Fisher, I object. Why are we, where is the model legislation that you pattern this after? You're creating new requirements that I've never seen before as an attorney of 33 years, all these requirements, and that's why I say they look like evidentiary rules, because you're going down the list of basically like a civil discovery, any written record of statement of substance of any oral statement made by defendant or co-defendant if the trial is to be a joint one, any report or statement of an expert made in connection. Some of these things are already covered if it's going to be used by the prosecution. You're also showing the hand that if we, if the defendant takes the stand and says something, you're preventing us from telling the defendant what we have to impeach him. They raise, you would raise it as examination, a direct examination, the prosecution would have the right to impeach your client on the questions that you've asked. Why are we having to show our hand as the people's attorney in advance of your questioning? Your list here of eight different items is either covered by the existing disclosure rules...
When you say, sir, I'm sorry to interrupt, but you said eight items?
Well, eight categories.
Yeah, those are the, those are the rules of criminal procedure that have been adopted for years.
Right. So it's there.
Yeah, but they were adding a new one. Just to help you a little bit on that, sir, have you compared the Rule of Evidence 404B with this proposed law? 404B requires only general descriptions of the evidence the prosecutor intends to use. You can, you could, I mean, you can drive a truck through that loophole. This law, if it becomes law, sir, I think you will note, requires specific disclosures. And the purpose, of course, is to allow a defendant to say, well, I'm not going to testify. That will be particularly damaging, even though I am innocent. But I'll move on from that, sir. I would, you, I think you made a statement, this is a bit of a, I'm paraphrasing, paraphrasing for a bit. You said that the bill requires prosecutors to disclose undefined information.
Right.
And my question is, why would it be undefined where it is the Assistant Attorney General who chooses the evidence it wishes to use? They will specifically know the evidence. Far from being undefined, it is specifically defined because the prosecutor, again, is the one who chooses the evidence. So I'm puzzled by that expression of yours.
On page two, the, under the eight, you indicate vicious or immoral conduct of which the prosecutor has knowledge. What is vicious and what is immoral conduct?
That would be, well, sir, that would be...
Morality is defined according to religion, normally. There's ethics, books written about what is moral, what is immoral. There's no definition of what a vicious or immoral conduct is. That was the reference.
Is there a definition of negligence? No.
Yes, there is. It's in the statutes, specifically in tort law.
It doesn't define what, anyway, okay, moving on. All right, sir. But the point being that it's prosecutor who will choose the evidence, they will know perfectly what the evidence is. By no means would that ever be undefined. I noticed this comment, you worry about disclosing evidence that may damage reputation of a defendant. Isn't it true that the fact that you have charged them with a crime and that you have brought them into trial and you accuse them of a crime and you do so publicly, isn't that damaging to their reputation? And this bill, I mean, I'm going to borrow from Winston Churchill, isn't this a little bit like bouncing the rubble at that point?
The American justice system does not allow a prosecutor to bring any charge unless the people allow it to proceed or judge.
No, sir, I have to interrupt on that. That is not the rule, sir.
May I continue?
The American justice system requires you to have probable cause and believe you can prove the trial.
No.
Beyond a reasonable doubt, yes, yes, it does.
With all due respect, Senator, the criminal justice system requires that the Attorney General or district attorney or whoever the charging authority is to review the evidence and put together the charges that will be cleansed through either a grand jury for purposes of felonies or for misdemeanors by a judge. There's safety, safety measures... There's safety guard, safety, safety measures put in place. No case number gets assigned to anything that the Attorney General puts together unless the magistrate judge believes that there's probable cause, that a crime has been committed and that the defendant committed it. Not that the Attorney General believes that you committed it. We are a party before the bar of justice, as you know, Senator, Defense Attorney Fisher. When we go to the magistrate hearings every day, we put the paperwork together and the judge can either accept it or reject it. If he accepts it, he puts the case number on it and that proceeds to the next step, whether it's the grand jury, which is another safety measure so that the Attorney General or any individual that's a prosecutor cannot drag your name into court unless it's cleansed through the, the 21-person grand jury, that type of process.
Okay.
So that is why I say you are incorrect in saying that I drag anyone through the mud. It's the grand jury and the criminal justice system through the judges and judiciary that authorize charges to go forward.
All right, thank you for that, sir. I just would point out that I'm not accusing you, I'm just quoting your words. You're the one who said that this would damage the reputation.
No, I said that if you require this bill, you're going to be putting additional information into the record that can damage their reputation. So in fact, it might be the author of the bill that's doing that.
Yes, sir. Let me ask, based on your, just your recent statement, I just wanted to ask you a real quick question. Do you believe your prosecutors can file cases that they cannot prove?
I believe every prosecutor is a licensed professional like you, our Defense Attorney Fisher, that they have an individual obligation that when they look over the paperwork, that they are exercising due legal capability on preparing those documents. There is ethical responsibilities for prosecutors as for every other attorney on Guam.
Okay, all right. Well, I'm, I'm happy to hear that, I'm happy to hear you say that, sir. It is a, it's one of the prime rules of our ethics that you not bring a case that you have no faith in and cannot prove. It's the kind of thing you should get tossed out for. Just a few more questions, sir. I would, I'd like, I'm going to look at your, the, the letter you wrote in, you submitted.
Testimony?
Yeah, that's the one. I just, this is your one, two, three, four, fifth paragraph. I just wanted to clarify what you said here. You said, "We want juries to hear testimony, but we also want juries to have as much information as possible with which to weigh the value of someone's testimony." When you said that, surely you meant admissible evidence.
Well, that's the only thing that the judge will allow in so the jury can hear. When that proceeding begins, the judge is the arbiter of evidence that is admissible or inadmissible and it's up to the defendant, attorney or the prosecutor to move or to object.
Well, sir, I don't know that you've ever, I don't, perhaps you have. I don't know that you've ever prosecuted a case, but would you offer evidence that you didn't think was admissible just on the hope that it would get ignored?
I, I have no idea what you're saying, Senator.
Would you try and move, would you try and move inadmissible evidence into trial? That's a simple question, sir.
I will only move evidence that I believe is legally capable of being admitted and it's up to the defense, the opposite counsel to object to whether or not that's admissible.
Okay, that's fair.
And then it's up to the judge to decide, right?
I agree with that. I just wanted to make, I just wanted to make clear that the office of the Attorney General would never descend to such skullduggery as to try and get bad evidence in.
Senator, as a defense attorney who we oppose in court almost every week, I think that, you know, your comments are because you're a defense attorney. You're at odds with us every day and I object that you're sitting here questioning me as the people's attorney. You are not acting in the people's best interest, with all due respect.
Yes, sir.
Attorney Fisher.
But please be, please be assured that this is all in the record, okay? So none of it's being glossed over. But you did bring up a good point. What is the goal of the Attorney General's office? Get convictions or justice?
The goal of the Attorney General's office is to enforce Guam law that you senators pass. That is the obligation of the Attorney General to enforce Guam law. The chief legal officer of the government of Guam. And justice is part of our ethical obligation as well, whether we prosecute a case, whether we don't prosecute a case, what is in the interest of justice, what does the victims feel, whether we can prove our case. Those are all the things that go in to the decision on when to charge a case, how to charge a case, whether to continue a case, whether to take a case to trial.
Okay. And then just a couple more questions. I'm referring to the, I guess it's your page three, first full paragraph. It says, "However, this bill," referring to the bill under question, "in question, "requires the prosecutor to disclose every bad act known about the defendant." Why do you say that? That's clearly not true. It says that the prosecutor intends to use. Perhaps you're just being hyperbolic here, but I mean, that's simply not true and I'm curious about why you would have included that statement. And the subsequent sentence says, "This bill also asks the impossible of a judge, requiring the judge to decide the admissibility of impeachment evidence." Sir, surely you're aware that judges do that every single day. This is not new by any, by any, by any stretch of the imagination. This is the judge's job. And, and I would just say to you, sir, that the bill, the, the point of the bill is to provide clarity and allow one of our fellow citizens who is presumed innocent to make a better and more informed choice about how he will react to the prosecution and how he will confront the prosecution. So that's, I guess, ma'am, that's my comment on that and I just, and I want to assure you, Mr. Moylan, or excuse me, Attorney General Moylan, that your comments on a potential conflict of interest are on the record and they have been heard and the Guam, the 37th Guam Legislature actually has ethics panel. I know of no reason that they couldn't entertain your allegation that I have a conflict of interest and ought to be either recused or precluded from acting on bills like this. I see nothing that would prevent you from making that complaint or making a complaint even to the Guam Ethics Office. So there is a, and also you have a right at the ballot box to get rid of me, right? So there are many, there are many off-ramps for your concerns, sir. And I think, you know, just on the, I guess, the general nature of a, of a conflict of interest, I've always thought that, in my professional capacity, sir, I've always thought that my principal job is having the privilege of being admitted to the bar. My primary duty is to ensure justice is done for the people of Guam and for my clients and where, you know, let the, you know, let the, let it fall where it's made, where it may, but I certainly don't, I, I can't quite get the, the nature of the conflict you are alleging that by doing things that I believe, or anybody would believe, were actually good for the people of Guam, somehow that that, I don't know, impeaches your ability to do your job when I know for a fact that you are much more interested in achieving justice than you are in achieving mere convictions. So thank you for coming to testify today, all of you gentlemen, and ma'am, thank you very much for giving me the opportunity.
Thank you very much, Senator Fisher. With that, Senator Barnett, do you have any questions or comments with regards to Bill 306?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Attorney General, so obviously I'm not a lawyer, I'm kind of outnumbered in this room, but just based on my research, the only place that I could find similar language to the bill that Attorney Fisher is offering was New York, but the, the language was subsequently repealed when New York replaced their criminal discovery laws. So I couldn't find this on the books anywhere in any state or territory, so I'd like to ask you, Mr. Attorney General, if you have any knowledge of this, these types or this, anything resembling this language in this bill being on the books anywhere else in the United States of America?
I, I am not aware of it. I had the team of prosecutors review this and I was not involved in the calculation of how much it would cost our office. That was sent down to our accounting people in conjunction with the chief prosecutor on that question. Paragraph number eight on the bill, I have no idea where that came from and that's why I say in the law, most jurisdictions, they look to a model set of rules that define what is the fair rules of the game when we go into the prosecution and the defense of the defendants because obviously they're innocent. Everybody's innocent until proven guilty. So this type of legislation, that's one of the big questions I have and I have not had my staff meeting with the attorneys to discuss that, but I know as a defense attorney myself, I've never seen this type of language. Guam's codes were, I believe, the criminal code was initially adopted from California. Obviously that was decades ago, but long-winded response, I have not seen this before, but we haven't really delved into it either. So thank you for that New York reference.
Mr. Morrison?
Senator Barnett, I'm sure you won't mind, but some of my colleagues watching this are probably pulling their hair out. I do want to set the record straight and say that under Guam Rule of Professional Conduct 3.8A, there is an obligation that the prosecutor only brings a case if there's a probable cause. That's not to say that if a case gets dismissed for a lack of probable cause that they've acted unethically, those things do happen, but the prosecutor must act in good faith. So that, that's just, that's just the law, I think, or that's just the professional conduct rule on it. Now, as to your question regarding the specific language in here, you may not find it in a lot of other jurisdictions and the reason's probably pretty simple because those jurisdictions may have ended up in a case, and I know this because my home jurisdiction is one where this nightmare scenario has occurred and then it's been on the Supreme Court or the appellate courts of that jurisdiction to figure out how to, what do we do now? So they already know how to remedy the situation because case law has spoken on it. Now, that's a long and cumbersome and potentially expensive process. Guam has not gone through that as it relates specifically to impeachment evidence after a defendant has testified, but other jurisdictions have, have the battle scars for us and have case law on it. Now, I don't think the statute is very different than the case law that I'm familiar with that says the prosecutor must disclose impeachment evidence if they're aware of it when we're going through discovery. So if, also on Guam currently, if you wanted to get an order from a judge that says this, you could file your discovery request and it would be pretty, I think they would grant it, they pretty routinely do, but this just sets out, I think, in a relatively straightforward way what should be required.
And if I, if I may, Senator Barnett, to clarify, when I address this issue of probable cause, of course, the, the ethic rules do speak about the prosecutor's duty to ensure probable cause, but the guarantor of probable cause is the judge or a grand jury. So we present the case, but it's up to the, these, the judicial officers as well as the grand jurors to green light and to allow the case to go forward. They check it, they're a safety valve. That's, that was the intent of what I was saying. Thank you.
Could I ask if you think that this bill is organic? Because I'm just looking at the Organic Act and one of the powers of the local courts is to make and promulgate rules governing the administration of the judiciary and the practice and procedure in the courts of the judicial branch of Guam.
See, this is why I brought that up. We haven't, I haven't done the legal research, this isn't a question that's been before us, but as a defense attorney and a prosecutor, it makes me question how far the judiciary can go in certain situations and how far the legislature can go. And I think that this is going into both realms potentially, what, what's being done here. So a defendant's right is normally afforded by the state, you know, in terms of what a defendant has a right to, but the evidentiary rules, which is what we're talking about here, what the jury gets to hear, sort of thing, the judiciary, the Guam Rules of Civil Procedure, the Guam Rules of Evidence, you know, you've got a, you've got a, a non-organic act judiciary dealing with a pre-organic act legislature, pre-organic act affecting the judiciary legislature. So all the rules in the past were set by the legislature and it's been over these past few years that they've been trying to decide which rules are still within the legislature's purview and which rules are not. One of the examples I would give is the, the 6107, what is it, 7GCA 6107, the rules to disqualify a judge. Those rules are set by the legislature. And oftentimes, the standards in which to disqualify a judge, like the appearance of impropriety standard, it seems to be most every jurisdiction that has the constitutional protection for the judiciary continues to allow the legislatures to set those type of rules. There's been a back and forth in terms of the rules of professional conduct. How much can the legislature say? How much can the judiciary say? As you can see with the power of the Attorney General, the duty to prosecute government officials and the duty also to render legal assistance to government officials, that's come into play. Where is the legislature's boundaries? Where is the court's boundaries? So this would require further legal research on whether or not it's infringing upon the judiciary's ability to set its own rules for, for procedures and whether or not it affects actually the defendant's rights.
Yeah. Mr. Attorney General, if this bill should become law and the courts do find it organic, do you think that it would be one more avenue for Attorney Fisher's clients to overturn a conviction on the grounds that the trial court violated the rules of discovery?
Absolutely. And what I'm most concerned about is the pecuniary interest. When a defense attorney has a financial interest in receiving the money from any defendant that he's representing, let alone the ethical duty, that's where the conflict of interest questions come up. And that's why I'm concerned about this and the fact that I'm spending our office resources having to defend that this bill should not be passed and then the implications that if it is passed, a defense attorney has authored a bill that is now creating a greater burden upon my prosecutors and investigators and potential further litigation that will end up in the Supreme Court of Guam potentially. It's just unnecessary and if, if you could show a model rule that this was drafted after, it would help us understand, is this a private motive for financial gain to pivot one of his current defendants into a better position getting to trial? My understanding is that Defense Attorney Fisher has several open cases that are before, pre-trial. So this arguably could be used in favor of Defense Attorney Fisher for pecuniary gain against the Attorney General's office and my prosecutors.
Or he could also just be introducing it to benefit all of his criminal defense attorney buddies?
Exactly. Against the people of Guam and against the crime victims and that's who I'm here for today. If I was on the other side, I might be doing something similar, advocating my clients, but I would not do that in the role as a senator because you guys have a, like a judge, you guys have a solemn duty to protect the crime victims and to protect the people of Guam. And I see that as being a violation and a breach today.
I agree and I just want to further note for the record that it was stated that Attorney Fisher's priority was to his clients in this hearing. So, Madam Chair, nothing further and Citoz Masi.
Thank you very much, Senator Barnett. If there are no further comments from our panel that's here today, certainly Senator Fisher, you have the opportunity to provide closing remarks on Bill 306.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Just to address, I guess, the Attorney General and Senator Barnett's concern, this is what's known as a Sandoval hearing. S-A-N-D-O-V-A-L. It's a Sandoval hearing. I think that the, just the quickest possible Google search would indicate where it came from and the history of that. And Senator Barnett is correct, it does come out of New York law. The second concern about whether or not this is organic, I would just like all of us to reflect upon the fact that the rules of evidence that are contained within 6GCA were also enacted by the legislature, as were the rules of criminal, criminal procedure, as were the actual criminal statutes. So if this bill is inorganic, I don't see how any bill that affects the judiciary in any way could be organic, which means essentially we're going to have to open the doors at the Department of Corrections because everybody is up there is being held under an unconstitutional, inorganic procedure. So I know that's a bit of an overstatement to my friend Chris Barnett, I know that's a bit of an overstatement, but I just want him to be, he should just be assured that the bill is in fact not inorganic. So I'd just like to offer that and then I just, I didn't intend to, I just have to address this idea of that I'm involved in this for pecuniary benefit money and that I have a conflict of interest by doing this. I think, because we're in a public hearing and we're being televised, this is the first time I've ever heard my character for honesty. time I've ever heard my character for honesty and honor impugned in such a scurrilous way. I hope in the future that we're all a little more careful with the hurling of accusations. Mr. Attorney General, I think it will make you feel a little bit better that all of the defense attorney work I am doing is for indigents who cannot afford attorneys, and I am doing so because, as you know, the Chief Justice of Guam Supreme Court spoke at a recent, not too recent, a board meeting for the Public Defender Service Corporation, and let us all know that there simply were not, not enough, uh, defense attorneys on Guam. We had a situation where there was only, at one point, we had a situation where there were only two people, two people addressing the entire indigent defense bar. As a member of the bar, sir, I would offer to you that the reason I have engaged in the indigent work is because I feel an obligation as a member of the bar to do so, just as we all have an obligation to provide pro bono services. It is an honor to be admitted, admitted to the bar, it is a tremendous honor to be admitted into this legislative body. And I don't know that I can, you know, it's an odd situation where you have to actually stand up and defend your honor, it's not something people usually have to do, but, you know, things arise. But I just would like to assure you, Mr. Attorney General, as, as well as you, Senator Barnett, that the work I'm undertaking is not for pecuniary game, gain, rather, it is simply to fulfill my obligation to the Guam Bar and to the people of Guam. So thank you for giving me the, ma'am, thank you for the opportunity of stating that.
Madam Chair, I'd just like to counter that I made no such accusation, that I believe the Attorney General had brought up the subject of, uh, financial compensation. I had merely said that maybe the bill was being introduced because of, um, the Senator slash, slash attorneys, criminal defense buddies may benefit from it, ma'am.
Okay, and with that- Madam Speaker, Madam, uh, Senator, I was on the defense bar, I am on the, I was on the panel, we get paid, so that is the pecuniary gain that I'm talking about. If, if the good senator is saying that he's not being paid by the judiciary for the work that he's providing, then I will stand corrected, but I mean the, and we still have to deal with the ethical conflict, but I mean, the indigent defense attorneys that are being paid throughout our bar right now are getting paid.
Oh, I didn't know that, Attorney General.
Well, you, well-
Senator Fisher made it.
Gentlemen, gentlemen, with that-
It's like he was doing it for free out of the goodness of his heart.
Uh, our focus is on this bill. I think we'll suspend any further comment. I thank all of you in the panel, if you have no further comments from coming and providing testimony on Bill three oh six as well as the bill earlier, three three three. For those of you who have testified orally or have not yet testified, the committee will continue to accept written testimony on Bill number three three thirty-seven COR and Bill number three oh six dash thirty-seven COR for the next five working days on Thursday, September twenty-six, twenty twenty-four. Testimony can be emailed to Senator Turlahey at gmail dot com or hand delivered to her office here at the Guam Congress Building. The public hearing is now adjourned and the time is three thirty-five PM in the afternoon. Sisus Massey to all of you for attending and participating in this hearing. This now concludes the hearing on these two bills.